All right, good morning. This is the budget workshop of the Lone Star College System Board of Trustees. It's now called to order and it is 9:03 a.m. If you could please get up from your seats and I'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands on our nation under God and that's simple, with liberty and justice.
Okay, so I will do roll call. So Board members present, I have Chairman Sullivan has stepped out. I'm here, Trustee Wilson. Trustee Bruce Art is running late, I believe. And then Trustee Stolma, do we have him online? No. Okay. Trustee Mesa.
Present.
Trustee Murillo.
Present.
Trustee Kane.
Here.
And Trustee Boat is probably running a little bit late. Thank you. Chancellor Castillo, has a notice of this meeting been posted?
Certified that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the law, Madam Chair.
Right. Ms. Barnett, has anyone signed up to offer public comment this morning?
We have no public comment for this meeting.
Perfect, thank you ma'am. Our next item is the review of draft recommendation for fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Dr. Vian, could you please step up?
Good morning. Good morning, trustees. Sorry, we weren't changing there for a second. All right, so you all should have received a copy of the full budget report approximately two weeks ago, and you will make sure that you have a copy of these slides as well today. We'll go through a couple of these quickly. They're just reminders and review items, but of course, if the board has any questions as I go through, please do not hesitate to ask, or I'm happy to entertain those at the end, whichever you prefer. So just a quick reminder, when we're talking about the review of the budget timeline, again, typically in July, the budget is provided to the board for review, and then in August, we put forth the entire budget for adoption, and by statute, it is to be adopted by September 1, so that is a requirement that we have. When you're looking at notable changes from the original February forecast that we had, some highlights for you, and we'll talk about these in much more detail as we go through. For property taxes, there is no revenue or forecasted revenue change. We still are estimating $244.5 million for property tax revenue, but one of the things I did want to highlight is that based on the board's recommendation and our analysis, we are recommending lowering our tax rate, and so we are proposing, or the budget, better yet, the budget is based on a tax rate of us going from .1076 to .1060. So again, those are the figures that the budget is actually based on. For student revenues, forecasted revenue is 160.5. There was no change from what was forecasted. State appropriation, we did have a decrease in our forecasted revenue from 124 to 111. We'll talk about that in extensive detail. And then our auxiliary and miscellaneous revenue, again, no change in what was originally forecasted for those items. So when we're looking at them in much more detail by category, when you're looking at it, what you see here is 24 actuals, 25 projected, and that's because we still haven't finalized this year, we're still in FY '25, and then what we're proposing based on the budget for '26. So the makeup right now is still 45% of our budget coming from local taxes, 29% from student, 20% from state, and then approximately 6% of our revenues from auxiliary and miscellaneous categories. So again, at 45% of our budget, tax rate still continues to be one that we monitor continually. There's been a lot of conversation on the legislation about this particular topic, and so, and still continues to be conversation in special session. Right now, we're basing the FY '26 budget on all the known facts that are as known to us right now, and again, it will be an increase of about $16.6 million in additional tax revenue over, for MNO, over last year's revenue. Again, we are recommending to lower that rate, and the budget is based off of taking that tax rate down by .016 cents. So when you're looking at certified values, this is always a question that comes up. I want to highlight this, we spend much more time in October and September talking about this, when we actually have to certify and set the tax rate, which is a very important meeting in time for us, but when we're looking at our preliminary basis, you can see that, you know, we're, we're still tracking very well in our areas, but it actually shows that we're a little bit less than 2.2% up over where we were at this time last year. So it's looking at about $333 billion in preliminary tax value. So when you're looking at that between our Montgomery, Harris, and SandJack counties, our estimated tax rolls are right around $333 billion. So that is a preliminary value, and again, that is what is yielding the 244.5 in operating revenue. This is usually a question that comes up, so we always try to highlight this for the board and the cabinet. When we're looking at where we sit compared to our peers, we have, you know, we have some really good growth in our area, and we're still trying to continually keep up with that and also not exceed what we call the, the no new tax revenue. So it's always a challenge when we're looking at growth and how to manage that, but again, what you're looking at right here is the 333 taxable value, and then our net taxable value is $291 billion. So the net taxable value is actually what we look at minus any exemptions. I only highlight that for you all because exemptions, that has just been such a big topic with legislation, and so really, when we look at net taxable value, that's what really determines our actual tax revenues. And so that means if somebody makes an appeal, or somebody gets an additional exemption, all of that produces what we call our net taxable value. So every time we talk about legislative changes, increasing homestead exemptions, all of those various factors, they impact our net taxable value. So can definitely talk about that more later, but just wanted to highlight for you all, since that's been such a conversation, the legislation, and one of the things that we have to actively monitor. So again, looking at the tax rate, we're basing the .106 is the current rate projected for this year. These factors compared to our colleagues across the state don't normally get updated until February, till we know where people actually lie, but you can see that we're still one of the lowest compared to our peers, and that always just want to enhance our value to our constituents, because we are a value compared to others in the state, as well as our peers and the other 49 community colleges. So for every basis point that we lower our tax rate, it lowers our revenues by $1 million. So just as a keynote there, so every point, cent that we lower, it lowers our revenues by approximately a million dollars. So every time, so when we're lowering it, which is something for you to keep in mind. Just taking a look at what percentage of the tax rate is actually MNO versus our debt service, and of course, as a reminder, our debt service is what we actually use to pay on outstanding bonds. So when you're looking at the chart at hand, 28.72% goes to the actual INS rate, and then the other remaining percentage goes to what we call our MNO portion. And so that, for the total tax rate, .0757 is the MNO, and .0319 is the INS for '24. And so when we're looking at those figures, that's how we get the actual makeup of our budget. So we have the MNO side of the taxes, as well as the INS side of the taxes, which gives us our total tax rate, and, but really, what we're talking about for the budget piece is the MNO piece, and that was really what we use for our fund 10 and our operating dollars. This is just a historical tax rate, so you can see what we have done as a system for the last several years. You can see that we held pretty consistently at the .1078 from fiscal year 17 through fiscal year '23, and then since that time in '24, we lowered it to the 1076, and it's held that way for two years, and then now we're moving it down to the .1060 rate. So again, just continuing to stay in line with the legislation and the rules that they require us to do with rising property values, and so all of this allows us to stay in line and not trigger any type of election or any consequence to us in that regard. So historical debt and defeesance, just showing you that after this past year's defeasance that the board approved, our outstanding debt remains at about $504 million. So with this current budget and what we're estimating, what this does not reflect is based on this year's tax rate, that we would project, and again, I say project, to defees another $49.5 million this year, which would continue to take our debt rate down to closer to 450, not including payments that we would make on the INS side this year. So we continue to lower our debt and our outstanding payments and saving taxpayers' money. So just pointing that out, that that defeat, that amount right there does not include what we would actually defees in FY '26, or what we're projecting that we could. All of that and the final number will be based on certified values. Okay. So getting in, moving away from property taxes and talking a little bit about student tuition, student tuition is 29% of our total revenue, and this year's budget, 160.5, will be based off of student tuition. So we are budgeting a minimal increase in that, but it is only capturing the growth from last year, meaning this would still be us staying flat this year, it doesn't project any growth. What we're doing is just capturing the growth that we actually realized last year. So there are no recommended tuition rates increased for FY '26, and so the rates would remain, the 111 for in district, 249 for out of district, and 313 for international students, which makes up our revenue projections. So again, when you're looking at budgeted versus actuals, again, looking at 159 is what we project to finalize this year for student revenues, and then again, what we're budgeting for this coming year is the 160.5. So when you look at us as a tuition and fee comparison, this is always something the board likes to see, is where we sit and compared to our peers and where our value is compared to the other 49 colleges. So we still maintain one of the lowest, middle of the road tuition rates, and so this is based off of 12 semester credit hours. So a student that is in district pays $111, and it would actually be $1584 for them to attend for the entire semester, and so you can see where Lone Star is in the middle of that based off of our peers. When you look at out of district, of course, that shifts a little bit, the state median is 1962, we are on the higher side of that to continue to recognize the tax rate and appreciate our taxpayers in district. And then looking at the out of state, based on 12 hours, an out of state tuition student would pay $4,008, and so again, that is just based off of the out of state and the international rate. When you're looking at state appropriations, state appropriations continues to be a big conversation, it is a big conversation this legislative year, as well as continued change to the modeling. State appropriations is 20% of our total revenue, so we will anticipate that we will receive $111 million in state appropriations this year. That is a 2.6 decrease from state appropriations received in FY '25. I think it's important to note that none of those decrease is a reflection on performance of the system, it's not, it's reflective on the model change, as well as the forecasted outcomes that the state models for us. And so based off of the best information that we have at this time, we still have not received what we call as final runs from the state on what those appropriations, they are actually having a special meeting today. We hope sometime after this meeting, when their rules are officially set and approved, that we should get a final formula run, but this budget is based off the information that we had at this time, which is the 111 estimated total revenues for that amount. So when you're taking a look at our formula funding and the percentage change, you can see and recognize that it is about a 2.4% change in year-over-year and for what we have received. But again, we continue to do very well compared to our peers, and Lone Star is still receiving the largest percentage of state appropriations, even with the new model change, with the next closest college still being several million dollars away from our allocation. So, and since the new model change, Lone Star has still received about $27.3, $27.8 million more from the state appropriation based on the new model. So we still continue to do well in that regard, but we continue to track and try to keep up with the modeling as it is changed. A couple of highlights for you all is just, we talked a little bit about it last time, is that one of the most significant that was improved for the outcomes was the transfers to private universities, we now are able to capture that, whereas last year we were not, that was as a result of Senate Bill 1786. Associate degree credentials of value, there's been a significant change in what they're calling the return on investment, and that's been moved from a 10-year period to a five-year period, meaning that the state does not consider it a credential of value unless the student actually is able to break even, if you will, or get their investment back within five years of receiving their degree. So that continues to be a shift, and a major shift this year that we continue to have conversations around. They're also limiting one award per student, per credential type, and another significant change is the data reporting. So in order for us to actually be paid on credentials now, it has to be conferred and reported within a 15 months of completion. So that does impact reversal articulations and some other factors that we're going to have to continue to dig into the data and make sure that we're capturing everything in a timely fashion, especially related to transfers and other items. And then, of course, the biggest change in what they're voting on today was the change in the statistical modeling. So it is a very complicated formula, I shared this with you, not to go into a lot of detail about it, but just to make you aware that they're continuing to change the methodology, and they have not yet given us what that model will actually be and look like. They're considering what they're calling best fit, meaning they will run our data against three different models and determine the best fit for Lone Star, but they have not been able to verify if best fit actually means the one that gives us the most money, or what that means, and so we've had several meetings with the coordinating board on this, and still continue to try to break that down. So just wanted you to have some of the latest updates as it relates to state appropriations. When you're looking.
Dr. Vian, I'm so sorry, can you go back?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just asked the chair for permission to be recognized for the record. I want to just stop right here for a second, and I, and I want to make the board aware of a few things, because they're now starting to sort of come together, if you will. So back in February during the board retreat, and again in June, we did things a little bit differently this year than we've done them traditionally, and, and I want to really sort of highlight that part of it, because I think that if we rush through this slide, it's going to be missed, and I want to highlight something. So essentially, if I understand what Dr. Vian is saying, the, the model that we had predicted that we were going to get about $13 million more than we're actually getting as of right now with the information that we have, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so back in February and in June, I asked the board for a little bit of leeway, because traditionally, what would have happened is in the spring semester, the chancellor and the CFO's office would have been busy at work essentially allocating that $13 million. And you remember that in February and in June, I told you that it was my recommendation that we not do that, because it's not real. It's just not real, is the sort of most plain way to say, as someone that has helped draft legislation, as someone who has interpreted statutes of first impression in the judiciary, you never can trust the law until it's tested, until it's tested in the courts, until it's tested by experience, until it's tested by the legislature, because sometimes there's unintended consequences that the legislature didn't anticipate, and especially when you combine sort of such a brand-new law with the legislative session itself, I thought it was a little bit sort of, it would be irresponsible, I think, to base the entire budget of our institution on such an ephemeral possibility. And it has now come to fruition. So by the projections, we're going to lose about $13 million. You know, then you can sort of get into metaphysical and semantics, did you really lose something you never really had, right? But all that to say is that even with a $13 million loss, if you will, no jobs were lost, no programs are going to have to be shut down, nothing that we represented to employees and students that would be in the budget for the next year is going to be affected. The single most expensive thing in the new budget, which is a cost of living adjustment of 3% for all employees, remains there, and we're in a really sort of good position because I had the trust of the board to not do the way, do it the way that we've always done it. So from a financial perspective, that's part of it. From a morale perspective, if you can imagine, if in February, March, April, May, the chancellor's office says, hey, we're projecting that you're going to get a million or $2 million for this project, people act in reliance on the representations of the office of the chancellor. And so what happens is during that spring and the early summer, people are planning, these are the things that I'm going to buy, these are all the things that I'm going to be able to do, I'm going to post jobs, because I'm going to be able to hire for people. And right about now is when we would have to start sending out emails to folks saying, hey, actually, all those things that we promised you, you're not going to be able to have because mistakes were made in the forecasting, or it was changed, or what have you. We don't have to do that this year. In fact, I sent out a note to all the employees yesterday, letting them know very transparently, where you don't have $13 million that we thought we were going to get. Nevertheless, everything that is in the proposed budget that we've been talking about for the last, I guess at this point, six, seven months, remains untouched, because we didn't count on that money, because we're blessed enough, unlike a lot of community colleges in the states, and not really need it for our operations. And all we have to do is exhibit a little bit of discipline and not rely on that money, and I just wanted to sort of really highlight that, because that wouldn't have been possible without the board changing things up in how we do things, changing the June budget workshop, for example, it was different this year, we didn't enumerate how that money was going to be spent, which is, from what I understand, is the first time. So just want to really thank the board, thank Dr. Vian and her staff, because this is exactly the scenario that my paranoid brain predicted back in January, and I just wanted to really highlight that, because I didn't want to gloss over the fact that we were talking about losing $13 million, and it really is a testament to how we're running this institution, from the board on down to every line officer, faculty and staff, to say, we lost $13 million, and we can still keep doing everything that we planned on doing, notwithstanding that. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
And so when we look at this again, like the chancellor said, when talking with our peers, you know, we're in a very great position, and that most of our peers and conversations and conferences and meetings, they'd love to have some of the problems we have, you know, regards to budget, but, so I don't want to not be appreciative of the state appropriations, because we have come out on the good side of that, but the predictive modeling, the ability to keep up with the changes and continuing to roll them out, it does continue to be a plague for all 50 of the community colleges, and many, like I said, are not in the position that we are to be able to manage that, but most are budgeting a lot of their state appropriations in contingency, because they just don't know if it can be, you know, counted on as reoccurring and/or if they're even going to be trued up the next year, because if you don't meet the forecast of the numbers that are projected, then you do owe that money back to the state. So just additional point of reference there. So moving on to auxiliary services and miscellaneous, when you're looking at that, again, this is about 6% of total revenue. The biggest revenue change in this, which is what we talked about at the June meeting, and what I had the permission from the board to do, is in the past several years, we have not been recognizing all of our investment income. Of course, you know, rates being at 1% compared to 5% or 6% generates a substantial change in investment income, and so for this year's budget, we are recognizing the investment income that we perceive that we will get, we do not think that interest rates will shift that dramatically this year, and as long as they remain up, then we wanted to recognize the additional revenue. But again, if interest rates do come down, that this would be a category that we would have to adjust revenue projections in for future years. Again, total investment income for FY '25 was estimated to be about $15 million, and it was only budgeted at $5 million, so that's where the $10 million delta comes from. Miscellaneous does include any fast income, it also includes library agreements, lease revenue, testing fees, credit card rebates, any of those other kind of a catch-all category, if you will. So there's a lot of different smaller buckets that roll into this bucket, and so that's why it's labeled miscellaneous, just to try to catch all of the things, if you will. And so when you actually look at it, 27.56 is that miscellaneous income, and then about 4.44 is what we're budgeting for auxiliary revenue for this coming year. So when you're looking at, again, just as a highlight of those items, $548 million is the estimated revenue budget and expenditure budget for FY '26, and breakdown of each of those categories that we've just went over. So when you look at those funding, again, just looking at the delta of 2.6 in state appropriations, $5 million in student, 16.6 in property taxes, and 15.96 gives us a net new revenue of approximately $34.95 million, in which to match up against expenditures. And again, the chancellor and the cabinet, and I've had lots of conversations, lots of good conversations this year about what that means and how we budget and how to be conservative, because again, in talking with peers, there are many colleges and universities that are making really hard budget cuts right now. So while sometimes the news from the state is not always what it wants to be, we're still in a very healthy, excellent position compared to not only the community colleges, but our peers across the nation. So I was at a national conference not too long ago, and about 80% of those colleges that were there reported that they were having to make some type of budget cuts this coming year to adjust for either enrollment decline, loss in research grants or otherwise. So we are, we are in the minority with still having additional increases. So one of the things that we like to highlight are the priorities for the system this coming year, and again, as the chancellor talked about, one of the biggest thing is what we value, and we value our employees and retaining good employees and making sure that, you know, they have livable wages, and so when we're looking at a 3% across the board compensation, that does amount to about $9 million. So that is the biggest budget priority for this upcoming year. Second to that, we've listed Magnolia Center, that is still on track for possession in December with opening in January, and so there's $1.9 million for FY '26 to open that building for this upcoming fiscal year. We also have funding in there for the new bachelor's program at $321,000, and then we have allocated $2 million in priority funding for mental health as a priority for this upcoming year. When you're looking at some of the other items, you can see we have additional $1.2 million for health insurance, that was actually a legislative change, so I want to make sure to highlight that, that was not something we did or passed to employees, that was legislatively a change, and an 8% increase to the employer for medical, as well as dental across the state. So that is a change that all public and state employers had to take on as part of a change in legislation this year. We did put $1.1 million for student-worker contingency, that was specifically related to federal work study and the likelihood if that would not receive funding for that. And then again, you can see the categories for retiree benefits, dual credit, faculty market stipends, VA work study, government relations, adjunct stipend for additional activities above and beyond their standard work assignments, $5 million for institutional priorities as a contingency. Again, that's just a set aside, because we don't know at this time what may happen with unexpected things, with, whether it be the federal government or state or others. So again, we have not, even with the increases and the things we've done, we still have money set aside for a rainy day fund, if you will, in the operating budget. As the chancellor has said, very conservative, and we appreciate, you know, the ability to have the flexibility to have that money set aside, just in case there's a priority comes up that we don't even know about as of right now. When we look at inflation, that continues to be an item impacting our campuses, so there is $4.5 million in the budget for campuses to receive an inflation adjustment. I've already mentioned mental health, we also put $2.1 million in cybersecurity, that was specifically to help OTS and our own internal departments to be able to make sure that as a system, we're prepared and able to do what we need to do in that arena. $300,000 for financial services, that is credit card fees and bank processing. I highlight that because we do not pass those fees on to students, so that is an item that we absorb, and we do pay that directly. So that is a year-over-year increase, in addition to $35,000 for body cameras for the police, year three of five, and then $20,000 increase year-over-year for background checks. So looking, yes ma'am, absolutely.
If you go back to that slide, so the $5 million institutional priorities contingency, would weather-related issues be there, or?
We have an addition, we already have $3 million put in an account for emergency related to weather, we could use that should we need above and beyond that, but that is not the only. We could use that should we need above and beyond that, but that is not the only fund that we have. So we do actually have a line item just for emergency preparedness. Unfortunately, it's not usually if or, you know, but it's, you know, when it's going to happen. So, so yes, we do have additional funds set aside for that as well as a contract with, for mitigation for, is already taken care of as well. So. Other questions on that? So looking at, again, some additional adjustments that we've made for this year, a $568,000 adjustment to the technology fund, that's our Fund 15. And that is, as intuition increases, that account naturally increases because it's a percentage of the overall budget. We did put $500,000 in food equipment maintenance as we've reopened cafeterias and that's been a priority for our students. A lot of that equipment is 15 to 20 years old and the more you use it, it's needing to be replaced. And so we mentioned the bachelor's program. It's also year five of five for our QEP. Additionally, student activity fund is also being increased, $155,000 again, just as with the technology fund, that is an increase naturally as our tuition increases and grows. We also had requests to additional hours for our stores. And so there's $150,000 going to help support additional campus stores for Tomball and an escalation of hours. We did promise $50,000 to Magnolia. So two different high schools in the Magnolia service areas, they're receiving a total of $50,000 worth of scholarships between those two schools for their students this upcoming year as an appreciation and a, you know, we're sorry that it took us so long to get here opening sort of thing. But we, they were very appreciative to receive that and the chancellor was very gracious to offer that to them. So that has been budgeted for this year. $3 million for new facilities, that includes Magnolia and Victory Expansion. $1.8 million for property maintenance, again, just as we grow and as things become more expensive, what it takes to maintain the $6.5 million of square feet that we have. Property insurance is going up, $489,000. The Chi lease is escalation of 3% in the contract of $25,000. Again, we have $5 million in designated general contingency, which is a new fund we've established. $55,000 advocacy, $35,000 auxiliary, and then again, additional funds for employee holiday and retiree luncheons that were needed to cover those expenses. And these are budget reductions and offsets that were made this year as well to specific programs that were either one-time funds for last year that were not needed again for this particular year. So when you're looking at the overall general auxiliary budget, again, breakdown, $548 million in total revenue and expenditures and increase-
Dr. Vian, can I interrupt you just real quick? Colleagues, do you have any questions on the slides? No? Yes, Dr. Trusty Kane?
The, the one question that I have so far deals with out of district and out of state tuition, but I can hold that question until later if you'd like.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure because I know there's a lot of slides. No, you're good. We're getting almost to the end. We want to, so when we're looking at that again, highlight of $548 million, 34.952 million increase over last year's budget. And then again, as you look at the expenditure budget, you can also see our transfers to R and R, which is one of the things I want to highlight. We are continually working to make sure that we give additional funds for our large capital items that would include items such as Wi-Fi, building maintenance. We've had a large priority of trying to make sure that we're putting money to, into the campuses and to those items. So we continually add additional funds to that item. And then again, you can see the 7.5 million at the bottom for bond transfers. And again, that is the revenue bonds that were issued years ago that are still paid out of our operating account. So reserves as of right now, to the best, assuming that we use all budget authority in FY '25, 25 for FY '26, there would be a starting balance in our reserves of $188 million. This does not include any set aside that has been done for capital projects or our ERP. So this would just really be our cash reserves. And again, that number could increase because this is assuming that we use all budget authority that we have for this year. And the financials just do not show that we would do that at this point. But with the information we have, that's an estimate of $188 million in reserves. And the board policy is that we have to have 20% and so that'd be $109 million. So as you can see, we are still in excellent financial condition and have way above the 20% threshold in our contingency or in our reserves for those items. As a reminder, when we talk about the budget, we will hope to move the budget forward in August. And then in September, I do believe that date was set for September 17th, where we would actually propose the tax rate and set the public hearing with the adoption of that tax rate October 2nd, which again, is a significant, important date for us and a big board meeting as we do have to adopt our tax rate at that time. Okay. Happy to entertain any questions or go back to any slides that you may have questions on.
So I'm opening up the floor for discussion. I think, Trusty Kane, please.
Thank you very much. I totally support the budget that has been created and I appreciate all the work that has been done on it. That slide that referenced out of district and out of state tuition. What are the pros and cons of looking at reducing both of those out of district and out of state?
So I mean, it's, right now, it's, it's when we're looking at what we charge, the past philosophy of the board, as I understand it, has been to make sure that we continue to have a delta, a distance financially from what someone in district pays versus out of state. If not, from just a, you know, support area, it makes it hard if you ever have to go to the voters because there's no value there in essence. So if I'm paying taxes, why do I get the same rate as someone who's out of state, right? So that's, it's a philosophical thing, first of all, but that is at the board's discretion to decide, like, what is our philosophy on that? And again, I don't have an opinion on that, but that's really just a philosophical framework that we have to say, like, do we want there to be a distance between in district and out or not? And then it's really just a financial decision. It would, to change that rate could shift several million dollars, but those are performers and financials that we can run for the board if they're interested in us losing, you know, looking at that. The budget this year is set on these factors. So at this point, I wouldn't recommend a change for this year, obviously because it would impact our budget. But at the board's discretion, we can run any performer to see what those numbers would look like and what it might impact us. But it would be in essence, a loss in revenue. So.
Yeah, I agree. I would not recommend changing it at this time. But I know we take great pride with our in-district tuition being as low as it is compared to other community colleges in our state. And yet, when we look at out of district and out of state, it's one of the highest. And so perhaps it's just something that, that we can take a look at in the future to perhaps get closer to the midpoint.
Yeah.
If doing so does not have a detriment to the overall budget that we have.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And again, happy to do those performers if the, if the board would like to see different scenarios and what that would look like for next year. So. We do typically adopt tuition changes in March, so it would be something we'd want to have conversations on fairly soon if we wanted to stick to that same timeline.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good point, Trusty Kane. Any other questions or comments? Trusty Wilson?
Thank you for all your hard work, your, your team, and thank you for presenting. And so I just have to piggyback off of Trusty Kane. And my thought process is if I'm in, in, in district, in local, paying taxes to, you know, saying go to a local community college or university or whatever, and I see that, you know, my rate, my rate's not changing, but then I notice that, hey, the out-of-state or international or whatever rate's changing, I would be offended. And I would then come to the college or whoever I need to talk to and say, y'all need to lower my rate because y'all lower theirs, you need to lower mine. Then in that instance, that's, that's money, right? And so my question would be, well, where, where would we replace, get the money to replace the money we're going to be losing? You know, if we can see how we can do that as well, because I would be very upset. And then I would just basically probably like, well, I need to go for free. You know what I'm saying? Because that's how some, some people's mindsets are like that. But it doesn't hurt the look, but you, we have to be very careful of the messaging that we're putting out. Not saying it's going to happen, but we have to be very careful. And then whatever money that we're going to be losing, we have to have a plan of action to where we're going to get the money from to replace the money that we're losing, like the difference. So that's my only caveat to that.
Good point, Tracy Wilson. Thank you. Any other comments, suggestions? Okay. Dr. Vian?
I just want to say thank you to the, the board and the chancellor for their support this year. And again, we are in a very healthy place. I do appreciate the collaboration from the cabinet and all of their support. Like I said, we had some really tough and great conversations that I think moved us further as a system. And last but not least, I would love to make sure that, you know, of course, you've all said it before, that this is a labor of love and doesn't get developed overnight and it is a system-wide effort. So I would like to thank, you know, the, the following folks for their work on the budget and that's Mara Capper, Mary Anderson, the budget and planning team, Brent Yole and Donna Hammitt from the treasury team, Nissa Peterson, as well as all the campus VIP ads and business officers and the OTS teams for all their work, because all of those individuals play a big part in putting this together and work a lot of countless hours on that. So I would like to give special appreciation to them and as well as you. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Vian. Thank you so much and your team for keeping us nice and healthy. Thank you. So with no further business to discuss, this board meeting is now adjourned at 9:44 a.m. Thank you.